All right, we have seven o'clock. I'm going to grab the 12:00 this meeting door. Counselor Drayer? Counselor Irvin? Counselor Fleck? Counselor Merideth? Counselor Savage? Counselor Stenning? Mayor Soulsby? Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, it's that time of year again. I'm about to do my State of the City address. I have a confession. I'm not a politician in my heart or in my mind, but I guess I am one on paper. I never aspired to be a city councillor and I certainly never aspired to be mayor of Cottage Grove, although I am humbled and honored. I plan on serving one term on council as an entrepreneur, mostly to give a voice to the small businesses because I didn't think they will represent at a time. Since I've been on council, I have been pursued by recruiters of the council representatives. That is a road I do not wish to walk. My dedication is to Cottage Grove alone. I once heard someone say, "Working hard for something you don't care about is called stress, but working hard for something you love is called passion." I was born, raised in this town. I'm a fourth generation of them. I love Cottage Grove. It is my passion, but I can't say this job has not been stressful. Being on council the last five years has been baptism by fire. Our police department went through an unprecedented upheaval. Oregon lawmakers thought it would be a good idea to decriminalize drugs and the Ninth Circuit Court handed down some rulings that we were forced legally to wrestle with. All the while, our homeless population surged. I am not the same person I was when I first ran for office. This experience has changed me forever. I've learned the importance of getting involved, not just because you want to change something that directly impacts you, but because it could impact the future of your children and your grandchildren. I was shocked to hear the governor of Oregon visited Cottage Grove to tour our homeless homes and shelters. I wasn't notified until after she was gone. By her orders, not to tell anyone. I did reach out to her office to thank her for her visit and to ask for a report on her findings. I also let her know that I thought it was disrespectful to the office that I hold, not me personally. Not to meet with the mayor. I would have liked to have shared with her the concerns of my constituents. I believe we are made to walk uphill. We are hardwired to figure things out. We will be more resilient if we work together, but that can only happen if we have, if everyone has a seat at the table. I do not think anyone expects perfection. We are all human, but we want to see our city progressing in a positive direction. I am aware and I share the frustrations of our citizens with the state of the homeless situation. Council has never had a unanimous vote on this topic and continues to be divided with differing views on opinions and opinions on how it should be addressed. We asked schedule, however, an open meeting work section session to reevaluate, reevaluate what has failed and come up with a new path forward. I am hopeful this will bring us some element of success. I would like to take this opportunity to thank city employees, department heads, our police department and South Lane Fire and Rescue. They've had more than their fair share of work and the scope of the work has changed throughout this crisis. In addition to all I've shared thus far, some of 2024's top priorities are our citizen and council collaborative effort in creating creative and achievable solutions for funding our city road improvements, along with hiring highly, high, high-quality professionals to fully staff our police department. I am proud to list 2023's accomplishments as follows. We purchased 61 acres of property off Cleveland Street for industrial and housing development. Planning created and presented the Cottage Grove Urban Forestry Management Plan, which was adopted by the city council. City staff acquired $60,000 DLCD grant to perform an economic analysis and buildable land survey. This is the preparation to perform a comprehensive plan update. Approved, built and opened a new 1.3 acre South River Road dog park, which has a separate small and large dog area. The city planner successfully appealed the proposed floodplain maps presented by FEMA and they are currently being reassessed with revisions estimated in spring of 2024. We adopted the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. We made changes to the monthly program and that was adopted by city council. Two open houses were held by bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The city planner submitted applications and received approval for the city's 30th Tree City USA Award and the 7th River Award. We completed downtown retail market analysis. Planning staff hosted the 8th Annual Emergency Preparedness Fair with a total of approximately 2,000 attendees. Planning approved the Pine Springs Master Plan Development, which will bring both housing and commercial services to the Old Village Green location. The city planner maintained the CRS Community Rating System, Class Six, ensuring 20% discount for blood insurance holders. A duct for lighting along the Rao River Trail was installed. We annexed a total of approximately 5.3 acres into the city limits. The Rao River Shave Project began. The city leases a portion of Rao Freshwater, Rao River Road to the Freshwater Trust for a 20-year planting and maintenance program. Planning staff completed the first year as contract planners for the city of Drenn, handling approximately 20 cases, including floodplain management. The building department issued permits for new convenience store and gas station, a new St. Vincent's at the Paul Retail Store, a new OCCU bank building, the new infill of Lane County Federally Qualified Health Clinic at Main Community College CG Campus and a new 18,000 square foot administration building for Starburn Lumber, a new 12-unit apartment complex on Gateway Boulevard, four new townhomes, two new single-family dwellings. We completed the reconstruction of the 1970 clarifier number one at the water reclamation facility. We extended water and sewer 300 feet on South Sixth Street to supply service to newly approved convenience store and gas station. We purchased 1.5 acres of Alderman Road for a future high-level reservoir in the southwest portion of town. Reconstructed the access road to the site of future high-level reservoir off East Madison Street above the current city reservoirs. City utility staff replaced the former log picnic pavilion at Prospect Park with a donated log pavilion by Warehouser. Branch Engineering has completed 60% construction documents for the Bohemia Park Entry Plaza project, with construction expected to begin in spring of 2024, with the estimated completion late September 2024. The Main Street Revitalization Project construction documents are at 30% completion for Branch Engineering. The goal is to be out for bid in spring of 2024, with completion late 2024 or early 2025. We installed and refurbished 800 KW backup generator at the water reclamation facility. The water reclamation facility biosolids project construction documents are at 30%. The plan is to proceed with construction in 2024 once all permits are acquired and funding is secured. ODOT completed both the urban upgrade project for North Highway 99 and the connector project in late summer of 2023. ODOT will be upgrading over 120 ADA ramps and crosswalks starting spring of 2024 and this will ensure all ADA facilities within ODOT roads within the city limits are current and compliant. City council appointed an ad hoc street improvement and funding committee. We have met eight times and are seeking input from the citizens about funding options. City South chips sealed both North River Road and West Main Street. Our street extension from Sweet Lane into the industrial park will be ready for bid and construction the first of 2024. Installed security system at the Armory and All-America Square Park. And it's the third year in a row Middlefield Goth bars has record use. Our police department hired a new chief who started September 23. We hired a new administrative assistant, 323. New operations captain, 523. Chief and HR manager worked closely to review the recruiting and hiring process. Expanded background investigation capabilities to create efficiencies on the hiring practice. Hired a total of seven new employees to fill vacancies in patrol, dispatch and administration. Four new police employees are anticipated to start this month. Those include a new administrative captain and three police officers. We added K-9 Fuji to the team this year. We also added K-9 Rip to the team as of 12/22/23. He and his handler, Officer Carlton, are certified and available for patrol operations. K-9 Rip was donated to the department by Working Dogs Oregon. We received nearly a quarter of a million dollars in funding from Oregon Emergency Management to upgrade the South Lane 911 Center. Dispatch center was moved into an updated office space. Lobby area at the department is being updated to accommodate the record staff. The anticipated completion is late January or early February 2024. We purchased and installed a new radar systems for our police vehicles. These are modern pieces of equipment that replace outdated and in some cases inoperable equipment that was in vehicles. This will increase our traffic enforcement capabilities. We purchased two new police patrol vehicles to replace obsolete vehicles that were in our fleet. The police department began the process of accreditation through Oregon Accreditation Alliance. The process can take up to two years to complete. New software was implemented to modernize the field training and evaluation program. The police department is launching an online reporting system that is designated by a local Lane County business in Eugene. MyPDC Connect is a virtual platform that is being adopted to help create a better access to reporting to the police department. We brought back Shop With The Cop this year. Walmart is a fantastic supporter of this event. They helped facilitate it and fund it. We hosted the first quarterly Coffee With The Cop event. Lastly, I wish everyone a happy and prosperous 2024. I want to encourage you to get involved in your city government, play an active role, volunteer, and remember, positive change starts with us at home. Thank you. Items to be added to the agenda. I see them. Appearances by interested citizens for items not on the agenda. Johanna C.
Mayor, Councilors, thank you. My name is Johanna Lee. I represent the city of Levenin here. So I've been hearing a lot of language that makes us feel like we're powerless to address the homeless issue. I sat for the agenda session. I heard one of the councillors mock people who have ideas. I've heard other intimidation tactics. I've heard other people say that we can't fix this problem unless we have state funding. And as you know, many of us have been researching various cities, what they're doing out there. And I don't think that we have to have our hands tied and feel like hostages, which I've heard from city staff. Like, oh, this is what we have to do or we can't, you know. So we have mentioned often that the city of Lebanon and what they were doing. And I hadn't heard anybody talk about this. So you have a packet in front of you of everything that they are doing there. And I took the time to call their city manager to see how this has worked for them. You know, the programs that they're in compliance with. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things here. And if I don't have enough time in my three minutes, I think there's initiative as well before you that would apply to this. So one of the nice things about this is the city Lebanon had decided immediately that they didn't in any way want any camp, but they wanted to be in compliance. So they sat down together with the community and, you know, looked at what their options were. Where they could have, you know, various people stay warm and dry, you know, to be compliant with the Ninth Circuit Court. So they have areas designated for sleeping at night and then they have areas they can set up a tent during the day. And they have very strict guidelines as to, you know, they can't leave debris behind. If anybody sets up a camp, that's picked up right away. So there's about five documents in front of you. So the city of Lebanon response, you know, just to go through because there was obviously some questions too. You know, a lot of excuses are being made. Well, we can't do it because X, Y and Z. Or maybe somebody hoarse at night and they can't, you know, what are they going to do during the day? Well, I think you'll find if you take the time, I invite you to take the time to look through these, this paperwork. You'll see answers to just about everything. And their interim manager is also available for anybody who wants to discuss how it's, how it's working. So overnight camping is prohibited at all times in certain locations. And the city identifies certain parts as available for use and protection during park hours, as we talked about before. In our city, for instance, it would make sense not to allow camping or anything during, in parks where child playgrounds are, right? I mean, that just is, is common sense. So and the city established a basic regulation for how the area is authorized for sleep. You know, they can, you know, certain periods of time, they can't tie anything secure, stake or anchor. They have to be dismantled at a certain time and removed during a certain time. They can't accumulate, discard or leave behind garbage debris on sanitary, hazardous materials or other items of no apparent utility. No fires, Brent.
Can I see your timer now?
Oh, where's the timer?
Oh.
It's right here. I didn't see it, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I will just continue when, at the next time and let you know what the city manager's interim response was to the questions I had about how it's being managed.
Thank you. I want to just let everyone know. I should have done this ahead. Our timer has malfunctioned. So Mr. Bynum will be calling the time. Looks like we got Mary McNaughton?
Matt Fener.
Matt Fener.
Name is Mary Actumera. I live in 30670 Cottage Grove, the Rainbow. And I have a simple question and maybe you can tell me where to find the answer to it. When I was on the city council between 2000 and 2004, I found myself at the end of my term with two homes, one in town, one out of town. And I'm just trying to clarify about residents and whether it has changed in the last however many years that is as far as city government officials are concerned, whether they live in the city or out of the city. I'm looking for an answer of whether that has changed and if not, where I would find that in writing.
We must live in the city limits.
We must, if that.
It's in the charter.
It's in the charter and is it stated that you must live there 100% of the time?
There's a really complicated calculus about residency. That is, so residency, I think you can probably distill it down to primary residence where you receive your mail.
And that's where you live? Where you receive your mail is your primary residency?
Right, but each one has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So I'm not going to give you like a blanket rule that, because I don't know the facts of the particular situation, but it's residents in, within city boundaries.
I'm sorry, it's what?
Residents, residency within city boundaries.
Within city boundaries.
Right.
Because when I found myself in that situation, I decided to sell the house that I have in town, not run for city council again and live in the vendor house. So, but you're saying there's a complicated process to figure that out?
Well, no, just the local conversation.
But we normally don't have active order this time. This is a good time for you to give us this one in time. Or, you know, we could certainly have the attorney, you know, weigh in on this and have available for you in the future.
I would like that. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like I just have one person online. There's the name.
Mayor, I think that one person was Mary and she came up.
Oh. So it looks like that is it for not on the agenda. The parents of interested citizens. Public parents, I see them. Set the agenda.
Check it.
Do you have a move approval on the second? All those in favor, so you can why they're staying on?
Okay.
Close. Resolutions and ordinances. I may. Resolution approving the petition for the formation of South Lane Park and Recreation District. Staff report of public works. Now, Mr. Bay Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before the meeting this evening and also earlier today, I emailed each of you with a couple of items that were questions from our Friday Agenda Work Session. One is the most latest budget that's been worked upon by this group. And then the second item is an item that was presented to the committee when they met with Lane County talking about their timeline and items that they would need to complete to go through the process of formation of the district. So hopefully each of you received those. So this evening on, this is a follow-up from our December 11th city council meeting where we had a presentation by Mr. Valley and Ms. Williams in regards to the work that a self-appointed South Lane Park and Recreation District Steering Committee, the work that they had have completed to date. At that meeting, they shared with the council that they would need to receive a resolution of support from the council to petition the formation of the district. So the resolution that you have this evening includes that support for them to proceed and go to Lane County to get a very similar resolution so that they could start the creation of the formation documents. The resolution also includes a $5,000 support for a third-party legal counsel. The committee had originally approached the city staff to consider seeing if it was appropriate to utilize the city's legal counsel to assist in this process because there may be, there's differing interests between the city and the creation of, or the working group for the South Lane Recreation District that it was advised that they need, they should really have separate representation so that there wouldn't be conflicts by utilizing one legal counsel. So there's a $5,000 request. I would, I would share with you that the timeline for this is kind of to meet the November election. As you can see in the information from Lane County, it's, they need to start the creation of the legal documents as soon as possible so that then they can, the group intends on gathering signatures to satisfy the initiative process to put this to a vote of the citizens in November. The money that would be expended would be, at this point, managed by the South Lane School District and that it would be utilized to create the documents. I wanted to ensure that council that if you choose to support the resolution and these resources, that the money won't be lost if for some reason the committee says their support's not here to go to a November election. So maybe we'll look to election in 2025. Those same documents would still be able to be utilized to go to a vote at a later time. So it's, unless the effort just completely doesn't move forward at any time. So this evening we have Samantha Duncan. She has some prepared comments that she would like to give. And I believe hopefully online we have Mr. Kiefer, who is the individual that has helped guide the committee through this process. He works for the Special Districts Association and has been assisting them in trying to proceed with what it would look like, how a district could be created, all the steps they need to make and preparing a feasibility study for them.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Duncan. I wanted to thank the council and the mayor for your service to the community and also for considering this resolution and request for funding. As Fay said, this is a process we've started. Well, I started a long time ago. But it's been kind of a topic that's been near and dear to my heart is seeing the need for more stable park and registries in this community. And so part of our steering committee, back in December, we had a firm do a, one survey of the community just to kind of get kind of the groundwork going in terms of what the reaction was to this. And then in this month, we will also be conducting another survey in partnership with the University of Oregon's School of Planning, Policy and Management. It's called the Real World Program. And that will involve more polling and public outreach to get a better understanding of how much support there is for taxpayer-funded Park and Recreation District. And then also whether or not the November 5th election will be a feasible target for that petition. And so to make, as Fay said, to make the filing deadline and gather those signatures for November, we'll need to get all of the required documentation created as soon as possible. And we will be needing that legal counsel as part of that process. And so if it turns out that we do need to go up for a vote in a later election, there won't be anything lost because we'll have all of that first hurdle of the process completed. So our steering committee, which is a pretty significant cross-sector of the community, we feel pretty strongly that the health and mobility of our entire community, this will be the school district boundary. So we'll be covering the whole area of the road and the outline areas. Will be beneficially impacted by Park and Recreation District. When the community is ready to support it, the district would allow for a centralization of a multitude of services as well as additional maintenance and programs for our public spaces and provide a stable funding base for those services to continue and grow well into the future. As a district, the community will have the opportunity to provide input and shape the types of services offered. So we also welcome any conversations and ideas about partnerships with different organizations and individuals. We're looking at this being a partnership with the city, the school district, the fire district, healthcare providers, anybody who is sort of creating recreation programs and currently relying on volunteers and grant funding, but just sort of centralizing all of that so that things can be more sustainable into the future. And again, we welcome any conversation, feedback, back and forth, ideas for partnerships so that we can make this thing work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flack?
Thank you, Mayor. So I expressed some concern going into this at our last meeting. Actually asked for somebody to reach out and give me more information. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. And that's, that's kind of where I'm at in this situation. I'm not opposed in premise to a recreation district. The problem is there are so many questions out there for me. Right now, basically what I see is a proposal to relieve the city and the school district of funding that's already happening. And so we're asking the taxpayers to actually fund activities that are currently happening. I'm not seeing proposals of what we're doing, you know, in addition to that. The other elephant in the room, as far as I can tell, is... The other elephant in the room, as far as I can tell, is we have no facility in this discussion at all. And so this is the first ask of what has to be a bigger ask for whatever facilities that we want to build down the road. So this is a big, this is a big ask for our citizens. This is a huge ask for our citizens. And this is at a time when our ad hoc committee has been meeting, trying to figure out how to fix our streets. We've determined that we would need three and a half million dollars a year just to get from 50, I can't remember the AGI, 55, up to a 70 roughly. So from poor streets to a modern health street. Do I think the voters will support our efforts for streets on top of a recreation district? I do not. Funding for our city down the road could be in jeopardy. We, we account the 3% a year, which is fair to the taxpayer. But for a city where our costs are driven at a much higher rate, that means we're not in a sustainable budget as a city. My first year on the legislative in 2000 with the city, we were laying off a firefighter and a police officer because we just didn't have the revenue to support them. And so the previous had had, the city had previously levies in the 90s which had not been renewed. And so I don't remember all of the details because I don't have all my time, but there could be a day where we need support for public safety. And, and I just am having a really hard time supporting this when we have so many other potential things that to me are core to what we do as a city. There was some comments, and I really appreciate Counselor Savage's comments Friday, Friday morning about supporting this going to the voters, which I do. I mean, I certainly am just one person in this community and I, I certainly am, you know, trying to weigh that. But this resolution asked me to give my support, which I'm sorry. I wrestled with this all weekend long about whether I could support this or not. At the end of the day, my concerns about the other needs of the city, potential compression issues down the road for the fire district and for the city. So while I certainly encourage people to support this if they feel this is necessary, I cannot. And so I certainly wish it well. I hope that it is successful, that the citizens also will support our other desperately needed funding. But, but like I said, I'm, I'm going to end up wearing one of those. Thank you.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. So to clarify, I, I actually share a lot of your concerns, Counselor Flack, and I appreciate you articulating them so well. My understanding is that what we're being asked to do tonight is to approve step one, which will ultimately be a multi-step process. So step one may encourage the answers to a lot of your questions, to which I think we all have those questions. And this will kind of be our skin in the game to say, okay, we support you finding the answers. We don't necessarily have to approve the next step if we don't answer the questions at hand. So I share your concerns. I'm going to vote yes because I will approve this step. But I share concern that if this doesn't come back, there, I am concerned at that greater picture. I, I'm really glad that you said what you said so eloquently because that is shared. But I will approve this step.
Counselor Merity?
Yes, I want to emphasize that before the district can be successfully created, it'll have to pass the voters twice. Once to, to see if they're willing to support it through petition. There's a required number of signatures so you can bring it before the voters. And second, they'll have the chance to vote yea or nay. When it does, it should appear on the ballot. So there will be plenty of opportunity for the voters to decide. It's, it's a very valuable thing for all ages of people in our area. It will affect not just youth, but seniors in all forms, adult, young adults. Your concerns about a facility is to, this will actually better utilize the facilities we have and improve relieving some burden from the schools and the cities. Then we can use those funds to direct towards roads and others here. But again, ultimately, it's going to be answered by voters twice. Thank you.
Counselor then, you're there.
Counsel also was recalling what interests me in this process in the meeting and it's, also Mary Day and I have worked now for, while I've been with the, I think the Pope? Yeah. What can we do to bring about an outlet, all developed place for the youth to go? And, you know, we're, we're diligently at something that's difficult and the engagement constructive activity. And so focused on, hey, we've got a skate park that is, is in disrepair. It's getting better thanks to what it works in a lot of ways, but it's insufficient to really facilitate that kind of outlet. And thought, you know, what can we do to remedy this? Feel like we had a pretty good gauge of public support or response. And that's when we started meeting with other groups and I had the realization, and it was just shared in those conversations that, you know, we're a disparate bunch of different people and trying a bunch of different things kind of independently or long period in mind. And there was, you know, just trying to start it, fail, trying to start it, fail. And so I just sensed that there was a kind of a, an apprehension to get, to get going again, to put the effort into it. So I'm very encouraged that a lot of those groups have come together, they have buswheels to discuss the impact. And I just think that this, this process is part of that. And perhaps it's been lacking its good communication across all affected parties. So I, in, in concept, really support the special recreation district. Of course, it's got to be valuable when it comes time to, when you look at how much more are you going to give up to and what benefit will be received? But that is up to the voters. But to get something in place with documents, with a process, if even this isn't the time to do it, that it is, you know, more formulated, well thought out and ready to be put over to get in at a later date, I think is very valuable. Now, it maybe, maybe you don't know. But I strongly encourage all parties that are, that are affected to, to have all the information that they need and, and to address those concerns. And at the end of the day, you know, we'll get a chance to, to say, yes, I, I think this is valuable for me or not. So I want to see it go to the voters. I want the process to be as transparent as possible. Questions that people have and concerns to be addressed and incorporated into the plan. So that if this thing does come to be, that it will be maximally utilized by all, all people in this area. I'm also very optimistic about its potential for economic development. You know, in look to Medford, for examples in our state, you know, Oregon has almost everything going for it. We get a lot of rain. Puts a damper on activities year-round. So to me, if we don't have like a year-round access to recreation facilities, outlets for our youth and really pour into that. So I am going to support this, but also be very watchful in the final approval step. Through all the reasons I have to state in this.
Counselor Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for sharing all your perspectives. I want to thank the group of folks who have been meeting quite a lot to discuss this visionary dream. When I think about why I threw my hat in the ring to be a city councillor at all, it's entirely for my daughter and that she have a future here and other opportunities here. This is what I would like for my daughter, to have more opportunities for parks and recreation, to be healthy and work together with our community members, to meet other people in a safe environment. And also as someone who works in, in the public sector, I know the cost efficiencies when you streamline and bring different groups together who are doing different things and they're, they all have their own sources of volunteers. If you can centralize and streamline those things, there's a great amount of cost savings. And you can really leverage that. There's a reason people stay together, everyone achieves more. I support this going to the voters. Who am I to stop it from going to the voters? And also quite honestly, Counselor Urban supports this. And if this animal of a mind looked at the sixteen-side die and says, yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea, then I also think it's a good. So I will support it.
Counselor Stunnett?
Thank you. It's kind of gratifying to be able to hear disparate opinions on the council and agree with all of them. I, I shared Counselor Savage's agreement with Counselor Fleck's concerns about our streets. And I, I hear those concerns among the public. I don't think we're going to hear them otherwise. I think we are all we all share those concerns. I hear at least as many concerns about our streets though as I do about do we need more opportunities for our young people? Holson Product thinks we've been busy and that is, that is just a building block of this town without, without kids. There's a future for this place and shared advice of having kids that I want to provide those opportunities for. But I know hundreds of thousands of people that have that that bias as well. So I, I support some of these new voters and see any good there.
Okay. Well, I'm going to say that I, I agree with Counselor Flack. I love all the people that are involved in this group. And it pains me to say that I do have concerns about our city right now. The biggest complaint I hear is the streets. And I wonder about the trickle-down for emergency services. And I, that is daunting to me to eventually maybe have to bring something to the voters for our streets that they may vote in on because we're investing in more services and parks and which, don't get me wrong, I am a big supporter of in a different time. And so right now I just have to streamline my thoughts. And I think we need to get back to the basics right now and make sure that our city has all those services, but it doesn't mean that I won't support it down the road if I can have a lot of faith that that can pass through. All right. Do we have a resolution number? Resolution number two, one, two, five?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number two, one, two, five, petitioning for the formation of the South Lane Park and Recreation District, including the $5,000 for the third-party legal counsel support.
Do we have a motion with the second? For the reporter, please call the roll. Counselor Drew? Counselor Urban? Counselor Fleck?
Nay.
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stunnett?
Aye.
Mayor Solzbi?
Nay.
Motion carries, left to two. This is from the city council. Item A, municipal court judge contract renewal and amendment. Staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So the municipal court judge contract is for one-year terms. They expire on December 31st of each year. The judge has provided his annual report to the council on November 13th, 2023. The council held an executive session to evaluate the judge on December 11th. And attached is the municipal court judge contract renewal and amendment extending this contract until December 31st, 2024. So it's appropriate for the council to consider the contract renewal amendment.
Counselor Flack?
Mayor, would the city council approve the renewal and the amendment to the municipal court judge contract and offer as the mayor's signed contract?
Do we have a motion with the second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Let's see them. City manager employment agreement. Staff report by interim city manager, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have a report. This is a city council's decision process. So I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor to guide the council through this process.
Maybe good point to stop to move it from the paper office room. So we all have the agreement. Any discussion on this? Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is certainly an important decision that we have for us for the future of the management of the budget group. And this is personally, I've been a part of it. So we've learned, learned a lot just the decisions from council to go through recruiter, that process look like. And we had some excellent candidates. In terms of this, this employment agreement, I guess they'll have some questions. I was looking to see if our finance director was here. But
Hey, could you speak up, please?
There's a bit of huff in my hip or something, but I, I have questions about the, the impact of the budget. And we were just discussing you know, decisions that we have to cut some, some decisions that will affect us. And so I, I would look for kind of input on this agreement. That's sort of the story of it.
So Counselor Urban, I'm David Flack. I'm here on behalf of your consultant, GMP. I was here also as your former city intern兼manager for three months. I can't speak exactly to your budget other than to say that the impact of your budget, this was a, this was, this was, this fell within the range that you adopted the time that was presented to you as a salary arrangement. At that time, I believe it was, it was consistent with your budget for the, for the proposed city manager. It is more than you, than the last one we've seen. But again, I think we had that conversation in life when I was retired, as you remember. If there's other questions about the contract, I can, I can be helpful. But I helped, I helped, I was part of the group that helped negotiate that.
Mayor, I might just add, Counselor Urban, I know that finance director, Ms. Lykins would have, and she had intended on trying to be here this evening virtually. But she is across the country at important engagement with her daughter. And we've looked and it doesn't appear that she has joined us. I apologize that she's not here to answer your questions.
Counselor Flack?
Yeah, there, there is. First part of this process, we do a salary survey. And as we all know, inflation is going up. You know, it's, it's an unfortunate part of being an employer. Certainly, our wages, the agency I work at, everyone got much higher than I would prefer, given the fact that bar can, can come relatively static as well. So I mean, I totally understand the concerns and I share them absolutely. I, I do, I did look over this agreement. I think that, you know, I certainly live with all of the pieces of it, including the salary. I will say that as Counselor Urban mentioned, I think we had some incredible applicants and I really want to thank all of them. Again, we have a pretty huge opportunity here and I'm super excited with that. I suppose if it's appropriate, I'll go ahead and move to the
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I believe you were going to take a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's, and maybe that's the case. I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Oh, thank you.
Do all the council or can we respond after the public comment?
We're going to move into public comment now for item nine B, Jahanasee. We're gonna move into public comment now for item nine B, Jahanasee.
I meant you.
May I?
Sorry.
Nine D. So that takes us to Mike War.
My name is Mike War. I live in Pre-Tan North Douglas. I know this decision's already made for the most part. And I was sort of troubling to find out from the news articles that we had made a agreement to, you know, loan a job to somebody where we didn't have all the facts at the time, I don't think. And that was sort of a puzzling to me where we now lend a contract to RDC manager who was let know at his last city that he was at. With that not being in the forefront, and that should have been the first question to be asked as to why, what was going on. But that just brings up red flags and it just goes to show where we have some fundamental issues with the council of not looking at all the flags out there. And I mean, that's just one of those things that we're gonna have to live with it. And whether it's good or bad, that somebody that, you know, as residents, we didn't have much to say. We rely on you guys to do that for us. And that's a big flag to me. If I'm looking at anybody, I do a background check. We have people that, within the city that do a background check and that's actually been the first thing that came up. And I think it's, we just need to do a little bit more due diligence on any things that we do out there to make sure we're covering all our faces and we make sure we do get the right candidate. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, I'm not gonna talk to the pet hunting company, but if it's me and I was doing it and I used to be a headhunter, I wouldn't have been paid for that because that's just one of those things. If you don't bring all the facts to them, then that typically, they don't get paid. And so I think, I think they did a decent job, but we still owe them a little capital for it as well. Thank you for your time.
Dick Gilkerson.
Dick Gilkerson, G I O P, I saw him. Originally, what I wanted to talk about was I understood the decision previously to hire a different, a different person for city manager. Now, is that true? And so I wanted to give myself work to fate. I think it would be a good asset for the city to have him. And when I heard that on the top show that somebody else had been hired, it come to me as surprising. I'm thinking that whoever voted the other way didn't have any common sense. And so anyhow, I guess what I was doing was complaining.
Jim Gilroy?
Jim Gilroy, nine forty-six Blue Sky Drive. And I'm here to talk about this topic because I was invited to participate with a community group in assessing city manager candidates. I thought that was an honor and an opportunity to bring some of the experience I had as mayor when I had to hire three different city managers during my time. And I hope it was useful. I'll be frank about it because I'm not speaking for the group I was part of because I don't have that permission, but I'll speak for myself. My top candidate was Fay Stewart. And I had hoped that Fay would be named city manager. Very close second was Mike, who was chosen. And if Fay hadn't been in the running, I would have been very happy to have Mike. But you see, I only see a part of things now because I'm not a member of the elected body, which you all are. And you have a much greater scope of understanding and vision for the community going forward than I do. And so I'm counting on you to have sorted that out. I'm also gonna say, I'm assuming that the hiring firm that you had through the analysis knew about that city manager situation. It never came to light, so that told me that it could have been a red flag, even though I questioned it too. And I had that discussion through the campaign. So I'm gonna say this, I think we're lucky. And I spent time with Fay last week talking to him about it. I just said, listen, you are my choice. But I think we're fortunate that the council looked at the picture that would allow us to get the best of both of us. You have someone who knows nothing about the community really compared to Fay and what he's accomplished already in his role as city manager, not to mention his other positions in that area. But also, I see this new person coming in with a wealth of experience that the way it came across was, I wish I had those candidates when I was, I didn't. So I felt we had two great opportunities. You took all the collective wisdom of the staff, the community people, and your council to make the decision. And I respect that. So in the end, I think Cottage Grove is well positioned for the future because you've got that excellence. And I, only thing I ask of each of those folks is that they work together to really be the best team possible because Cottage Grove will win and so will its council for making the wise decision. Thank you.
It looks like that is the last one of our public comment.
Madam Mayor, may I, I just wanna, whether it's clarifying for the council or clarifying for the public or just because you didn't really have a staff report, I want to be really clear that this has been a lengthy recruitment process. It involved a lot of different stages. The last stage prior to this point was negotiating with a top candidate. And the decision, I keep hearing the decision has been made. The decision has not been made. I want all of you up there to know and I want the members of the public to realize, this is the decision-making process right here. There is no city manager right now. It's one of the reasons you didn't get a staff report. And so who you want as your city manager would be determined by a motion to approve this employment agreement. But it is yet to be decided, voted on, or, you know, deliberated publicly, which is why we're going through this process right now.
Councilor.
Yes, I've heard of many concerns of the count, of the public about Mr. Sauerlein and his dismissal in his previous job. I also was able to meet all the candidates to participate in the process from the beginning of reaching out to replace a long time city manager, someone who served here in, you know, three decades. So it was a big, huge decision that we are in the process of making. So let me make a few points of clarification. He was, Mr. Sauerlein was asked to leave without cause. That means that as this body, in, in our role as the hiring agency of the city manager, that we could also ask any current city manager to leave, say, without cause. We just don't, we want to change course and it's without prejudice. When, when I first got involved with politics, this election of two thousand and twenty-two, it was in response to a couple of actions that were going on, including one of a group that was running on as a slate who's, where I went to several meetings and heard their stated purpose, this was to replace the city manager. Had they been successful, they would have had a majority where they could have chosen to also ask Richard Myers to leave. It would have cost us a year's salary to have him leave without cause. Without cause means that there's no wrongdoing, there's no law breaking. We just don't, we just want to have a new manager and there's no malice, there's no, it's, you're not being fired because we don't like you per se, but we want to go in a different direction. It's just, we're ending the contract. As exactly as the manager at any point could say, you know, I'm turning in my letter of resignation. I want to go in a different direction. It doesn't have any, any malice either way. It's just we're gonna, I'm gonna do something different or we're gonna do something different. For cause is a different matter. That means you've cho, you've chosen to violate a law, not follow a procedure or a council order, and that means you messed up. So you're fired. And you don't get the severance package and you don't get a good recommendation and it took a black mark on your record. So apparently from the, in speaking with the recruiters, it's fairly common for city managers and employees to be relieved when there's a change in council. It's part of the, part of the job. New crew comes in, all right, time to go. And it's not, it's not anything terrible in the profession. If you look further on the news items in the same community where Mr. Sauerlein was released without cause, there were a number of other officials that either chose to resign or were fired as well. So I think that you need to look further into the news than just that. As far as us not being informed, we, we got information received in response to our questions. Many constituents did their own research and sent me things which I passed on and asked the same questions you're asking. Why, why is anybody, why are we considering anybody that has trouble with their councils and was satisfied on aspects? I checked off that we had many qualified candidates, but I noticed something. They were many people from way out of state, Alaska, North Carolina, from the Panhandle of Florida where I grew up and got to hear my real down home accent and it was great. But why didn't we get too many people from Oregon? Washington? Well, there was a recall going on here. Who wants to stick their head in that Warren's nest? I think we did ourselves a disservice trying, at the same time we were trying to hire a city manager to dismantle the hiring agency. I don't think that really did us a favor. Despite that, I think we have an excellent candidate and I'm hopeful that the council will accept this candidate. I also want to echo how much I admire and respect Mr. Stewart and think that he is also gonna be with us and could easily step into the role sometime. I noticed from the career vitae of Mr. Sauerlein, he's had thirty years of service. So I can't imagine him wanting to be here forever. So I think it's very possible that Mr. Stewart could be considered in the future. I also think it would be, the time would be great for his greatest success if there's a, if you're not having a break in your replacement of the public works director while you're running a new job, but that's just me. So thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think we had a great set of applicants despite a lot of chaos that we were having. A lot of conversations were had, both in public and in private. And I think we are blessed. We are blessed to have this amazing candidate who's come in. We are blessed to have continued staff report or staff coming in and being that support moving forward. I'm encouraged that we are working together to build a better community. And we need to trust that that's what we're all doing. So I'm inspired by this.
I do have a few things to say. First of all, I want to make a correction to Councilor Mary Day's slate running on. First of all, there was no slate. That was a group of candidates that endorsed a group of people that they were not running as a slate. And that is an absolute lie, that it was ever a part of the platform at all, of anyone's platform that I know of, that they wanted to get rid of Richard Myers. I did a call for an investigation into the police because I thought that was a valid thing to do of anyone that was going through, any city that was going through that type of situation. So I'm gonna just leave it there. We did get twenty-nine applicants. The recruitment company narrowed it down to nine. So I'm sure there were some from around our area as well. We just did not see them. All this is pretty much public knowledge now, but in case you don't know, I'm going to go through it. We did pay our recruiter eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to vet our candidates. I was upset that we got our group of semifinalists for us to choose. And as we all know now, the past employment history, anything negative, that was not included. And it wasn't just Mr. Sauerlein, there was two others. I only found that out after choosing our finalists by constituents that sent me screenshots. I was very frustrated with this because I maybe naively was relying on our recruitment company to do their job and find this out. And I feel like that was their job to do. And I wonder personally if it is a bridge of contract. I'm, I'm very frustrated because I know it says per industry standards. I did call a recruiter that I know with twenty years' experience and I asked her if that was industry standard. And so first of all, I called GMP as soon as I found out. I sent them the screenshots and asked that they knew about it. I only had it on two. And they, he told me that, well, his first words were, should the candidates have told you about it? Probably. But I, let me assure you, I know about at least one of them in intimate detail and it was just not a good fit. I can accept that because I do know at will employees can be fired or asked to leave for nothing at all. But I also know that a lot of times that at will employee that is fired for no cause, a lot of times attorneys will recommend that you do fire for no cause to reduce the lawsuit coming cities way. With that being said, I'm not saying that this candidate or any of the three candidates did anything wrong. It's, I'm very aware that people lose their jobs for political reasons and that does happen. And so I'm not trying to say anything of that thing at all. But I do believe we should have known about it to make an educated decision. And I was also very upset that the recruiter actually did know about at least one of them and did not share. I thought that was actually worse than candidate not sharing anything. He did apologize. He took full responsibility. He called it an oversight. And I think it's more than an oversight. So when I asked the recruiter with twenty years' experience, is this per, is this industry standard? Or because he told me that they did not do a Google search on the candidates, that they don't do that until we choose our top finalists. I think that's backwards because we choose our finalists on their recommendation. But the recruiter says not only does their company do a Google search, they do a DuckDuckGo, they do a LinkedIn, they do a Verifide, they do a Facebook. And so that's standard in her company at least. I conveyed to the recruiter my frustration and explained that. I conveyed to the recruiter my frustration and explained that we, as a council, wanted to definitely have transparency with our community because we feel like that's very important with what we just went through with our police department of people, and also things that were going on in the community with the recall, with homeless issues, that I wanted to make sure that we were very transparent through this whole process. And, and so I explained to him that the first people I heard this from were constituents, and so I didn't think that was going to sit well with our community, even if this candidate I, and I said, I just wish that we would have known before. I found out the day before we were actually flying in our finalists to meet with our community at the community forum, and I thought it was also not fair to the candidates to set them up like that. This was, everything that the recruiter sent me was all of the news coverage, the newspaper articles, and I immediately took those and I sent them to our interim city manager, David Klein, so that he could forward them on to the council because I think that I thought that our council needed all this information so we could make an informed decision. The recruiter did a question that we could ask to our interview process to help us decipher through this. This has been a very long process. Through it all, I am talking with my council. I have never felt heard through this. I feel like I was demeaned, I was disrespected, I felt like I was bullied into voting a certain way. I, not by my entire council, but the majority for sure. I don't feel like any elected official should ever go through that. I think that I, I explained that I was going to vote my conscience, and I think that everyone as an elected official should vote their conscience on every vote that comes in front of them. So, yeah, so with this, my, my problem is not with our candidate at all. My problem sincerely is with this process. I, with, with the majority of the council, I will work with their, with your vote, I'm only one vote, I will work with whoever is chosen for the better of Cottage Grove, but I really disagree with how this whole thing happened, and I just needed to get that out.
Counsel Savage?
So I need advice from counsel because to defend the vetting process, I would have to disclose executive session content that I believe are read just yet. And so how do I defend a process that was just executive session content from a mayor? And I guess I'm saying this rhetorically. I'm going to not read the letter, but I prepared. I am so saddened that I have to read this letter. I, I just, but I wanted to be prepared. So let me start by saying, in the last few years, it has been very difficult for the city of Cottage Grove and its council. I certainly am not perfect, but I've always tried to put the citizens' interest first, all citizens. I believe good government representation starts with honesty and integrity. Second most important quality of elected official should be the willingness to work towards consensus. Consensus, of course, is not that everyone agrees, but that everyone can live with the outcome. If consensus cannot be reached, the willingness to not hold hard feelings against individuals who disagreed would be most paramount. The next attribute I believe is more, is most important, is the elected official's position and beliefs. Are they reading all the material presented? Are they making decisions possible? Some may think that these priorities are out of order, that conservative or liberal, Democrat or Republican are most important. I disagree because democracy requires representation of all citizens so that all voices can be heard. I believe Cottage Grove has a well-rounded council that represents the city well. We have liberal and conservative, young and old, male and female. There certainly could be more diversity with better minority representation, but I believe we're a fairly diverse base in our population. This is where the, this is where the conversation becomes difficult. COVID started the escalation of tensions here and nationwide. People feeling that the rights were not being upheld, extreme amounts of money being spent, general mistrust in government and economic concerns, including severe increase in the unhoused population, were some of the drivers of these tensions. Our leaders at the national level taking more and more extreme positions and honesty and integrity taking it backward to politics. This, in my opinion, has also happened in the local level. I have tried to work with our current mayor, Hannah Soulsby, over the last several years in the role as counselor and as mayor. This has been very difficult for me because I have served 17 years on this council, and for most of that time, we were able to keep an atmosphere of mutual respect among the counselors, even when we disagreed. Former councillor Jake Boulain used to have huge disagreements on issues, but always maintained a good working relationship. Miss Soulsby, on the other hand, has been divisive and created an atmosphere of mistrust and division. That is a lie. This has become-
Wait a minute.
No. Point of order. You have no right to speak at this point in the hearing. You're attacking-
I'm not asking. Sergeant Moore, just remove anybody.
How many did you beat? What you did?
I have the right to speak here. Is that a mayor?
Come on, please.
This has become more problematic since she became mayor. The mayor is supposed to be the person on the council bringing us together, not the one fueling division and discontent. The list of the mayor's missteps is long, and so I'll keep my, keep to my heat concerns. There are, in my opinion, three potential Oregon ethics violations the mayor has committed. In Oregon, in any vote or a representative may benefit financially from a vote, they must disclose their conflict of interest. There are two types of conflict of interest. The first is an actual conflict of interest where the individual will benefit directly from a decision. The second type of conflict is a potential conflict of interest where the individual is part of a class that could benefit from the decision. Vote types require disclosure of the conflict, and an actual conflict requires refusal from the votes. The first potential violation was while we held discussions about the Main Street revitalization project. The mayor owned several properties of Main Street and should have disclosed at a minimum the ownership of those properties under Oregon's ethics rules. That decision will likely increase the value of those properties, impacting her financially. One could argue that the community benefits from the revitalization of the downtown, so the mayor is part of the class. One could also argue she directly benefited. Either way, she should have disclosed this conflict in every meeting. The second potential violation occurred at a work session in February of 2023. The council was discussing potential measures to increase housing units when short-term rentals came up. The mayor expressed the desire not to regulate short-term rentals while having a short-term rental property herself. This decision, this direction was also given to staff at a subsequent meeting. Once again, the mayor was part of a class and should have disclosed a conflict of interest. I have not said anything until now because these were likely unintentional violations, and I've been trying to keep good council rulings. The last potential violation is the straw that broke the camel's back. It seems clear to me that the mayor violated executive session rules by disclosing protected content. There were posts on social media from the mayor's friends describing the content from executive session. I do not have proof at this point. Of course, I guess now hearing the discussion at this meeting, I think I do. But, but it's been suggested we have an outside investigator who can do this. I would completely support that. This is so egregious because we are making one of the biggest decisions we will likely make in many years. Who will be our city as city manager? This wasn't an accidental faux pas, passing information to a family or friend. This appears to be an intentional effort to stir up discontent in the community and sabotage our incoming city manager. All of these potential violations are an absolute insult to me and the other councillors who face the potential recall effort. Recalls are for the very things I listed above. Not because, or not because you're not getting your way. Okay, tough stuff is out of the way. In spite of these challenges I mentioned, I would like nothing more to have the mayor and council be successful. I recommend that we have leadership, team building, and ethics training in the near future. I'm not sure that they'll be effective, or will be able to divisions that we have, but I want to try. And, and I, I truly mean this with all of my heart. The only way we're going to be successful is if we can stop this. And so my next comment is, Mayor Soulsby, please stop. In my estimation, you've lost the support of a supermajority of this council. I don't trust you, and my guess is that most of the other councillors don't either. We don't trust you!
Here, here.
My last point is, what legacy do you want to have? Do you want to be known as the mayor who united a divided council, or the one who created the division?
You wrote that.
I wrote that.
That gets nothing to read, you know that.
We're going to move on. Appointment of city manager pro town, staff report.
Did you finish that last second?
Oh, no, it's still the city manager appointment. There was no-
Did you want to make any comment to that?
Well, I, I mean, I provided what I, an overview of what I believe was a robust process that is leading to this decision-making discussion. I, I was asked at the beginning of Counselor Fleck's presentation to weigh in on whether or not I believe that I heard anything revealed from executive session. I didn't. Everything, my understanding, at least having not attended the executive session, is everything that I heard was from public discourse, public Facebook posts, public conversations. So I didn't hear anything that was a detail from anything that I'd consider to be confidential from an executive session, which I just want to be very clear, I will caution the council again, please don't share confidences from learned in executive session. I would like to not have my opinion challenged, but you can definitely take that up later. And I, I'm not running the meeting, so.
Counsel Savage?
So there was content from our deliberations that was just shared, and we now have proof from executive session that. So my question to you was, can I defend myself? Because I will just go ahead, since the cat is out of bag, and say that we did ask those questions of all the candidates, and we did that in our process. And I'm, I'm just appalled that we're here. I just can't believe that we're continuing to spiral down the drain. This is just completely not productive. I guess with that, I'm going to move. Oh, gosh. I move that the city council approved the agreement to authorize the manager to send a city manager appointment agreement.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Whether or, any discussion? Whether or, please come around. Counsel Urban? Counsel Fleck? Counsel Savage? Counsel Drier? Counsel Stenit?
Aye.
Counsel Mary Day?
Aye.
Mayor Soulsby? Five to two. Motion, parents. Appointment of city manager pro town, staff report by interim city manager, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So you have a memo that was dated December 28th. It was presented by Mr. Klein, the former interim city manager. And at the date of December 31st, 2023, he appointed myself as the interim city manager until today, January 8th, when the city council could consider to continue me as interim city manager until Mr. Sauerwine's first day on January 22nd. So it's up to the city council to either continue this arrangement or appoint somebody else interim city manager.
Counsel Savage? Thank you so much. I think that you are doing an incredible job, and we are very, very lucky to have you in this position as well as in the public works director position, and I totally agree with this. I'm very pleased.
Counsel Stenit?
Mayor, I would support having Mr. Stewart continue his position.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion?
No. But I will move that we have approved the designation of Mr. Stewart as our city manager pro town.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, sign if I can say aye.
Aye.
Motion, parents. Item C, city council subcommittee and liaison appointments, staff report by interim Mr. Stewart.
Oops. I think I missed something. Did we skip an item? Yeah, there's one before that, wait. It's council president.
Election of council president, staff report by interim Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So pursuant to Chapter 3, Section 9 in the Cottage Grove Charter, the city council at its first meeting each year must elect a council president for this membership. It is the duty of the council president to reside in the absence of the mayor and act as mayor when the mayor is unable to perform duties. Counsel Irwin has served in this as council president for this past year. It is the recommendation that the city council by motion select a member of the council to serve council president for the year 2024.
I think Counsel Irwin has done an amazing job, and I want to thank you, Counsel, for everything, just being a man of integrity up here, and I really appreciate it. I would like to nominate you to do it for a second year. Counsel Mary Day?
I would like to question Counsel Irwin, if he'd be willing. I would also like to echo the mayor's assessment of your role as council president. Pretty much appreciate it.
Was that a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, sign if I can say aye.
Should I?
I don't know.
Do you give money for that? All those in favor, sign if I can say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion, parents. Now. Item C, city council subcommittee and liaison appointments, staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So annually, the city council reviews and approves the mayor's appointments of members of the council to various subcommittees and liaison positions. The appointments are intended to help keep the city council informed on activities and programs within the community, and to have council members represent the city at the community and at regional level. A list of the 2023 mayor's appointments is attached, and I believe she is recommending that those appointments will remain the same for the year 2024. The vision keepers appointment are for a two-year period. There was a question, I believe, by Counsel Savage at our work session Friday as to a status of the vision keepers, and I researched that, and Ms. Callan had shared with me that the committee is on hold right now for two reasons. One is, is appropriate that once the council sets goals, that the vision keepers process could build-
that the vision keepers process could build up those goals from council. And the second is to... They believe that they need a facilitated process to determine the vision for the next 20 years. And that, right now, at the present time, there's no resources allocated for that. So provided Mr. Sauerwein and the council chooses, possibly in the next proposed budget, there would be resources to continue the vision keepers process. So right now, it's on hold. So I guess I would turn it over to the mayor of the council at this time. If you're the Subcommittee and Liaisons, I believe that there is an additional item brought up by councillor Fleck about either appointing a alternate to the lame act or if it was appropriate to appoint a staff member to attend in his absence.
I guess if we don't have any opposition, except for my...
So, Mayor, or we should add city manager orders designated to that? I believe we could just have staff as that alternative position. There are several cities that actually send their staff members to...
What do you have to add about Mr. Stewart?
I think that would be appropriate. If Mr. Sauerwein would care to attend, probably a good learning experience for him to get up to speed about how our transportation system works in Plain County. But myself, or I'm sure the city planner could attend in absence.
Thank you. Should we possibly bring her up? Online.
Mayor?
Councillor Meriday?
I don't have the... I don't know in my list of some committees, but did we have a member on Delco?
Yes. So if everyone's okay with that? All in favor?
I think we need a motion. So I move that the city council approve the mayor's Subcommittee and Liaison Appointments, which were the amendments we discussed. And I think here, maybe she may talk. Proving vision keeper plenty?
Yes, please.
We have a motion with a second.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Planning Commission Appointments, Staff Report by the city planners, Monkin.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. Council appointed a subcommittee to conduct interviews of candidates for the planning commission vacancies created by term expirations on December 31st, 2023. The subcommittee was appointed on December 11th with councillor Fleck as the chair, councillors councillor Urban and Mayor Solzby also participating in that interview subcommittee. There are two vacancies on the planning commission. Staff advised vacancies... Appetized, excuse me. Vacancies via the Cottage Grove Sentinel and on the city's website. One application has been received from incumbent commissioner Garland Burbak. Committee councillor Fleck will announce the recommendation for appointment to the city council at this evening's meeting. Staff is readaptized for the remaining vacant seat on the planning commission. So it is recommended by staff that the council appoint or make their recommendation to... The subcommittee make their recommendation to the full council to appoint planning commission.
We have a public comment. Councillor Meriday?
Amy Meriday to apply. Planning is where solutions occur. Planning is the most significant thing that a body of such as yours can be involved in because this is where solutions come that are thought out instead of us being reactive and fomented and angry. This is a chance for you as a body to ensure that the city is going in the direction that it wants. There's been a lot of things, and there are a lot of things that have been identified as being something that have come up short in our town and in our community, in our society. Planning is where this happens. Mayor Solzby, you mentioned the acquisition of the 50, 60 acres, whatever it is, on the south side of town that will bring maybe 1,000 homes to Cottage Grove. This is where we begin to decide how we're going to recruit the people we want to have to build our town. I'm talking about preschool teachers. I'm talking about nursing home care heroes. I'm talking about new teachers. I'm talking about kids who just graduated from high school and kids who come home and can't get a place to live home from college. We have an opportunity to create small cottages in our town because we have this once in a... I don't know when this could possibly happen again, that we would have 60 acres to work with. And so my ask of you as a council tonight is instead of just taking... Well, you know, I get to go talk to Garland about this if I want to. I can go ask him that. But the fact that no one else has stepped forward to be... I'll offer myself up here tonight to serve on your planning provision, if you could add me to it. I think it's absurd that we're not really reaching out to our community now as to how those 1,000 homes would be divvied up into what sort of housing. We always talk about affordable housing. How much affordable housing? Now, everybody knows there's no such thing as affordable housing. We know that affordable housing isn't affordable. So if you're going to build 1,000 homes, why aren't we discussing now in public as to who we're getting on our planning commission? Who's going to support low-income housing? Who's going to support migrant population housing? Who's going to support housing for the unhoused? We complain about the unhoused. We have an idea that if they could just get a house, everything would be fine. The fact of the matter is that they wouldn't take jobs to get a house. And so we are lucky we have a tapped humanity. Thank you. I really think it's a very important position. And I'd like to see you hold off on that, filling that last position and ask the planning commission to consider what the divvying up would be that you make.
All right. Councillor Fleck?
So just a quick point. The planning commission is not, actually, about the things that Ms. Meriday mentioned. Actually, the planning commission is a cause I do judicial for, meaning they are judges. So basically, this body sets the code, and they evaluate whether an applicant needs that code or not. And so I really want to make sure it's clear what the role of the planning commission is because a lot of folks will be interested in it for varied reasons and then be disappointed when they find that that is not what the planning commission does. So with that said, I'll move that we enhance Garland Burbak to a three-year term, beginning in January 2024 and ending December 31st, 2026. So.
Mayor, I would just like to add that there is a second vacancy that Ms. Meriday would like to apply. There's applications online, or she could acquire one at the Public Works office to apply and be considered for that final position.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Yes. Item G, Cottage Grove Economic Opportunities Analysis Advisory Committee Appointments, Staff Report by Mr. Monkin.
Thank you again, Mayor, council. City of Cottage Grove has received a DLCD technical assistance grant to study the city's commercial and industrial employment plans inventory via an economic opportunities analysis. The city's last adopted EOA was done in 2009. When completed in approximately 13 months, the final adopted... Excuse me. When completed in approximately 13 months, the final EOA report will be presented to council for consideration and adoption. The outcome of the adopted report will include potential code amendments, comprehensive plan amendments, zoning map amendments, and other policy recommendations. Additionally, the final adopted report will become the city's economic element of the City Cottage Grove comprehensive plan. The advisory committee will be comprised of representatives from the city council, the planning commission, historic preservation commission, community stakeholders, and others. And they will be assisted through this process with consultants from Eco Northwest and DLCD. The advisory committee meetings are slated to begin early this year, hopefully in the next two months, and either to conclude at the end of the year or just into 2025. So it is recommended at this time that two city councillors be appointed to the EOA advisory committee.
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. A question about the time commitment. And then the other thing is, as long as vision keepers are on hold, I think I recall, at least there's two of us on vision keepers. Maybe that can take its place as well. You know, just kind of weighing the options. So depending on time commitment, I think it'll...
Mayor, councillor Savage. So generally, the advisory committee for a study like this is probably only going to meet between three and four times. Throughout the process, those meetings will be usually announced within about three weeks' notice. And then, you know, it'll be an hour to an hour and a half. Reading material-wise, as you all receive regular packets, there will be some additional homework, if you will, to prepare for those committee meetings. But it's a pretty low-impact volunteer.
Councillor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just state that I am so aggressive about economic development in this area. I really want to be aware of what's happening and be able to be part of the process. So I would offer my volunteerism to this position. But I'm also certainly happy to defer rather... Captain besides others.
Oh, me too. I love this committee too, but I would be fine with that. If you guys wanted to do it.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I would certainly be interested, but I know councillor Urban is passionate. And I certainly have served already many other committees after the passing of this.
Okay. So we have councillor Urban and councillor Savage. Item H, Council Direction, Staff Report on Three City Residents Proposed City Initiatives, Staff Report by interim city manager, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So at the December 11th, 2023 city council meeting, during public comment, Michael Bork requested that the city council review his proposed initiatives and consider placing them on the ballot. On December 12th, 2023, Mr. Bork requested that... made that same request in writing that the city council review and consider placing the three initiatives on the ballot. So before you, in exhibit A, B, and C are those three proposed initiatives. The first one would amend Chapter 3, Section 7 of the city charter, and it would require the four city council positions representing city wards be elected by their residents in the ward for which they have filed. Currently, the ward positions are elected citywide. The second is an amendment to the city charter in Chapter 7, Section 32, that would require a vacated city council position remain vacant until filled by a vote of the city residents at the next general election. Currently, the positions are filled by the city council until the next available general election. And lastly, is a proposed ordinance, amending ordinance 3174, Section 12.24.020 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code pertaining to overnight camping. The proposed ordinance would require the overnight campsites to only be occupied from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. the following day. Currently, there is no limits on how long current occupants are allowed to stay in overnight campsites. I would share with you two that legal counsel has provided some additional comments for your review. I believe each of you were given those. And I would share that for the first two items, exhibit A and exhibit B, the council can choose to do nothing. Actually, you can do that for all three. Or the council can direct staff to proceed with repairing the items to direct them to place them on the ballot. And the third, exhibit C, council could direct staff to prepare an ordinance for your consideration. So legal counsel has worked at limited capacity with the city recorder on these proposed initiative languages. And it is possible that they could be implemented if they went through the initiative process and voted in by the citizens of Cottage Grove. So really, staff is looking for council guidance as to if, you know, at low level, if any, participation you would like staff to take on these items.
Councillor Fleck?
I thought that H that I found out was public comment. Ah, yes, absolutely. I think in my glasses, it was a B. H looked like a B. So I just wanted to... So now I can see the font. Three minutes, thank you. So it was actually because of the agenda session that I attended last Friday and heard the language for those initiatives for the first time that I was prompted to gather these materials and send them to you. So it was fairly comprehensive. But I wanted to point out a couple other things and then tell you about my conversation with the City of Lebanon's interim manager. And one is on attachment B, on the packet for the ordinance. What page it would be, it's 12.14, designated sleeping area and overnight sleeping area. I know that I've heard concerns from you guys before, well, what if this situation, that situation? And it has a wonderfully written clause in there that enforcement of time restrictions may be suspended by the city manager, police chief, or designated for severe weather events or when necessary, or appropriate to respond to an individual with medical condition, disability, or any circumstance. But I think it's important to not make, you know, rules, laws, ordinances for the minority, but for the majority of them, allow provisions like this, which is the compassionate action to take. And then, so I asked him, well, how is this working in Lebanon? You know, because in the past, the previous mayor had said they've got a great program in Sutherland. And so a couple of us went down there and actually did what's it going to look like in reality? You know, it was on paper. So I wanted to get their firsthand. And I've got an email into their mayor as well, to get a different opinion. So Ron told me their last pit count is 52. They have a population twice that of Cottage Grove. And I think we had had a pit count of a couple of years ago, 20 to 30, 40 at max. And we're far exceeded that at this point. So they said they've got designated areas that people can be at night. So it's not restricted just to dawn. And they could also set up and stay warm and dry during the day. It's other areas that they can set up, but there's no specific encampment. So it's not as rigid as the initiative, I think, that's in front of you, is proposing. And I'm really liking the language. So again, I encourage you to look at that. So they haven't had much use of those, maybe one or two people that are consistently on their sites. And they said they implemented this in the summer, this past summer. The biggest benefit, they said, is they have law enforcement to actually enforce the law now that they basically redirect them to the correct areas. Sorry, you can't be here, you need to leave, you need to go over here. And that's been working fine. It's always a matter of also offering them services, which they do. He said to note that, though, people don't take them up on the offer of the services. Still have people sleeping in doorways from time to time, but they encourage everyone in the community that is actually up. And they call, hey, I've got somebody sleeping here, sleeping there. And then law enforcement goes around. But they haven't really used any extra staff time or anything to enforce this. So that really wasn't an issue. And... But they think, I'm just going to make this one last point, is that they recently did a 90-day review. You know, the council looked at, okay, how is this working for us? And they all agreed to continue as they're doing. So from the summer of last year till now, their implementation of the ordinance you have in front of them has actually been working very well. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Councillor Black.
So let me kind of step through these one by one. There was discussion Friday at the agenda session around folks being not only living in the ward that they represent, but also in the ward buildings for that person. We have had that. Councillor Mayor Digg, he should use more history on that. I do remember that it changed one way and in the back. I think Dawn probably remembers that was back in the year when we first got involved in the city. And that was, basically, there are, you know, costs involved with having districts, or in this case wards, to elections. So we have special elections, there are costs that drive it. You know, voter turnout, you would assume is the same, so I don't know if that's an issue or not. I actually don't have any heartburn over this. I do want to state, I certainly don't suggest or support the council referring these items, but certainly welcome, you know, the petitioners to go out and have their signatures. So, but I don't, I don't necessarily have, you know, concerns one way or the other about all the first item. Number two absolutely is flawed. As an example, what if four councillors ended up off the council office, and you would now no longer have a ward and no longer a city government? And to wait till the next election would be just ridiculous. I, I don't know if we just not thought this through, but that would make no sense. So as a recommendation, once again, if you want to do it up to the voters, would be to say, we'll hold a special election, it'll cost the city money, but give a period of time and have votes apply and then run for that seat. I don't have any heartburn over that, but leaving it open for a year or two years is absurd. The last item, we're going to have a work session on. I certainly don't support this. I kind of mentioned in the past, having the police would ultimately be responsible for moving folks out of this, out of the sites, public works cleaning them up. I just, at this point, don't believe that we have the capacity as a city to implement this, even if I felt that it was a good decision. And so I certainly couldn't support this. But I certainly want to mention that I do not think that that situation is acceptable, and we do need technical solutions. So I don't know what those are at this point. I don't believe that this is the one. So that's my two cents.
Councillor Black.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the first reaction to this was, well, pretty great that residents are coming with ideas and suggestions to address issues that are coming before, from sharing it with us as a council. So I appreciate that. I don't, I don't feel compelled to, to get behind any one of these as they're written to prefer them, but I also think it would be a great idea to do offer signatures. What I'd like to do is, similar to councillor Black, is offer some of my observations on them, and that may be helpful for recrafting or before they go up for a petition. So similar for the first one, my understanding of the problem that's trying to be solved with changing who can vote for who is that there's a low turnout or that there might be confusion about who you can vote for. And based on the question, the Friday session was, okay, my understanding was that we had this, it's gone both ways, it's flip-flopped, so we haven't necessarily resolved that problem. And if we knew the other way, councillor Mayor Digg indicated that there was even lower turnout at one point under this proposal.
Particularly in some wards.
In very particular, it's actually been balanced. So if I haven't informed you, at least that seems to be more balanced. But I would agree with the sentiment that why would we want to have as much educated voting populace as possible about the process? So in any way, we can facilitate that, I remain in full support of. As to the second item, similar concern, I think the one that councillor Black expressed, where you would have, basically, the council have an inability under certain circumstances to operate its function, that could be remedied by a special election, do general elections. The idea of representatives being elected by the people they're representing, and so I'm not sure exactly where that might go. I believe there was a cost of special elections that was fairly significant. I think I heard the number 15,000.
And Mayor, I would say, worked with city recorder, and yeah, 15,000 was the approximate number that was given by Lincoln. If you're in the room, sure. That, you know, you have to weigh out the value of cost of something. So, you know, once again, if voters want something like that, then awesome, but we want to protect the function of the council and not be subject to, you know, like poorly drafted rules. And then, on the third one, pertaining to making the adjustments to how we set rules for sleeping sitting line in parks and public spaces, I agree, we're going to discuss this. This probably, this isn't the best way to go about getting something out there for, I think, where we all are, but the more information that can be provided, I think it is great to see how it's working in different situations in different municipalities in Oregon. Also very curious to your former attorney, maybe, you know, opinion on how, how that might be doing, or what liabilities that might be adding in different scenarios. But the discussion is good, the sentiment is there, and look forward to parsing those different scenarios out in our session of this. So thank you for bringing these to us, and I believe us and those councillors.
Councillor Savage. Thank you so much, Mayor Solzby. I really appreciate both of your eloquence. I think both of you have stated a lot of probably what we all feel up here, that we're not necessarily opposed to a lot of this, but also not the way it's worked, you know. I can't endorse any of the three, but the first initiative, my only concern is if one specific ward didn't get the turnout, it's not a fair representation of necessarily the city at large, but it is a representation of that ward. I can go either way, you know, the voter of people, you know, that's fine with me. The second one makes me nervous with potential large gaps. At first, I was thinking to myself, my gosh, how is this different than what we do now? Because at the bottom, disability prevents a council member from attending, we can appoint somebody pro temp. Oh, my gosh, isn't that what we do now? We appoint somebody regardless of the term that they're going into, they're going to have to run into, at that two-year mark, at the inner, in between of the four-year vacancy, or the four-year appointment, to even keep the seat. So it still is the voter of people regardless, and it's saving folks money to not go to special election. So it seems, I have heartache with spending money outside of that, knowing that we've got a general election coming up within two years anyway. So I thought, or firstly, I thought it was saving the money. And the third one, I'd like to know more about the lawsuits that are going up in Portland. I have a hard time moving forward with a concept that's now being viewed as something that's, that's not okay. So I need more information on that. And again, we're going to be discussing this. I agree with councillor Black, I think that we've got some issues that we're going to be addressing, we're aware of that. I'm really excited to have these conversations. This may not be the right platform, but I had a thought the other day, you know, we have this amazing, this is a side note, we have this amazing outreach with our streets, and we're meeting with lots of groups, they're going to different organizations and different groups, and doing this wonderful outreach, educating folks, and talking with folks, and asking questions, and gathering data. You know, I'd like to see something like that for our own house. Let's, let's do this outreach. You know, here we've been focusing on this one big meeting, which may be a little bit anxiety inducing for a lot of our citizens. What if we did this smaller outreach? It's not to say we couldn't do a bigger outreach later, but I think we'll get a lot of really amazing information doing these small little bubbles of education, even if we're just gathering data and not necessarily pushing information out, just gathering data, gathering data, gathering data, and I think we'll get a really good, accurate representation of what folks are voting for and how you receive. So those are my two cents about the three initiatives. Councillor Black.
Well, it seems, it's right that we have requested that Michael Bork be present to answering questions, so, Mike, is there anything that you would like to respond to any of these questions?
I was, I was, I didn't get, oh, it didn't come up. Basically, on these, I wrote these, no, no, you guys know that. I put those together, two things, it sort of was, one fold is with our wards, we're supposed to be represented by our, the council that's there, and currently, it's basically a at-large for all of them. So there's really, you know, you get rid of all the wards, just go all at-large, or you go with, you know, the wards and the two at-large, because how most of the people in the ward that I'm in do not feel like we're being represented. So that's sort of where this whole thing came about. And, and when I looked at the city charter, it used to be like that before, and then it got changed, and some of it, they said, because people didn't vote in one, you know, one area or another, but at least the people that are in that ward are getting represented by somebody there. And that's sort of the whole point of that was. The other one was, the next one is on the replacement of a city council member if they choose to, you know, leave or do whatever, is that does happen, and it's really having the people, either if it's in that ward or at-large, that, you know, the residents actually have a say in it. Yes, the city councillors are here, but if somebody leaves, doesn't necessarily mean that that carries over to the best candidate for the residents. So that's, that's all that was for. The initiative is sort of two-fold. The last one, done to dust. I really want Highway 99 to be the model area, and I've stated that, is that's the one that we should have where people are doing the right things, that's where they should go. You know, the ones that are actually working, understand drugs, the most things, that's where Highway 99, that's where we should have, put up most of our efforts into. The other ones, I mean, it is what it is, but we have no rules, we have no regulations on these people, you have no parking signs, they park here anyway, they don't stay with inside their own areas that they're supposed to, they're outside the camping areas. So we're not monitoring it, we're not doing anything, we're just letting them do what they want to do. If they want to run chainsaws at 10 o'clock at night, they can do it, and that's what they do. You know, if they want to go down the road and lay in the road, that's what they do. And, you know, some of it is, you know, we know there's, you know, medical issues or psych, you know, mental health and all that, but you put these people in residential areas. The people that buy houses there did not sign up for that, and you guys specifically did it. And that's where the whole angle is. They're having, you talk about people having to worry about their kids being outside. You talk about sports programs, there's a lot of people that can't have their kids outside because they don't, they don't feel comfortable. And that's what you put in there, and that's the real problem there. So I'd like to see if we're going to, you know, keep these camps, have them here, let's move them to another one, so everybody within the city can benefit from it. So, you know, the last two years, you've had them at 12th Street and Douglas, outside, move them to another two areas, and try them off there, and go that way. Thank you.
Councillor Black.
So just as a final piece on the, the cost, you know, so basically, if we are doing wards where folks also vote within them, we will have to pay to have those districts drawn, they will have to be proportionate population-wise, there will be some costs in setting it up, and then every decade, when the census comes out, that will have to be redrawn. So there, there are some other challenges with doing that, which is why I'm assuming that we went backward from that. I, once again, I don't have any heartburn, but I just want to make sure that everybody's in wards, you know, in the census.
Councillor Black.
Does that mean that in our current situation, our wards are not divided effectively by populace?
We have not evaluated that in years. In fact, the last census came and went, and we did not reevaluate those wards. So no, probably we have not addressed those in the last decade.
So is there effectively no value to the designation of wards as we currently, I mean, could just get rid of them? There'd be no effective difference?
Well, Cresswell basically says vote for four, and the top four of the candidates get it. So, I mean, there are lots of different models out there that we can choose from, but, you know, it's all governed by our charter, so, you know, that's, that's what those stands at.
I mean, the question is, there's no functional activity, so you don't have our ward designation as it stands?
Well, we are effect, I mean, I don't know without looking at it, but we are close to evenly divided. We just haven't reevaluated in a long years. So there may be, you know, small discrepancies between the wards as far as population, that would have to be remedied, remedied if, if in fact, we were voting in that mechanism. In fact, it probably would be a good way for us to do that regardless, because the person does have to reside within that ward.
Mayor, I'd just add, councillor Urban, theoretically, if a person has to live in the ward, there would be some probably implied assumption that that individual was aware of the activities that were taking place in that ward, and hopefully they would represent those needs to the council. So I, I do, I do think, because you have to live in that ward to qualify to vote, there would be, you know, some implied expectation that you would be able to represent those needs to the council of what's going on in that ward.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So I mean, I would support making sure that WW, then we can actually, it's been a decade or more since then, we're getting to a point that, you know, maybe some of these actually live in other wards. Potentially, if they got redrawn, if populations change, we'd have a lot of people coming into the town. That has happened, this story.
Mr. Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Urban, as I remember it, and this is from hazy memories of conversations from like 10 years ago, when I was new on the council, I got the sense that one of the reasons the ward system remained, even though voting for wards did not, was to, it's sort of a means to prevent a majority on the council from all, say, living in the same apartment building or in, you know, the same little neighborhood, so that it would force the council to be sort of spread out among the community as well. So that was the, the other aspect that I cannot prove, because I cannot remember enough about the conversation, but it's sticking at the back of my head, if that's useful at all.
I would definitely support the wards, you know, drawing up and voting accordingly. I, I do see the value of representing your own ward, and I can understand people not being represented, and I also think there would be some benefit to it as far as even when the candidate is running, to go ahead and make contact with their neighbors and find out what their needs are. It's incredibly difficult to campus a whole city, so I would definitely support that. And as far as the city council replacement, I would love to see, and I don't know if it's possible to, for it to go to a second round, but also run, and I don't know if that's a possibility. Two people round, and, you know, of course, one's chosen, and then someone drops out. If it would be possible to approach that person that ran in, if that's a possibility that has to do. us to do. And then that might alleviate a block of time and to where we only go to a special election every once in a while. So I do see the benefit of the people electing who they want in these seats. It's a little scary sometimes when our council gets real weighted, you know, because we do want diversity up here. Yeah, so I'd like to see it remain with the people. As far as Dust Till Dawn, I do think that this has written past some challenges, but I do like a lot of that warning and the lemon idea. Would like to see us take a look at that as well. Any else?
So I just want to offer my opinion, if it's desired at all. It sounds like everybody's pretty, we have a consensus, nothing's going to be referred from this body. So I can, I remember being asked for my opinion on the Dust Till Dawn one, but I also have been reserving that conversation for the work session and later conversations, but I just wanted to confirm that that's acceptable. Okay. And the filling vacancies, something needs to be, if there's going to be a change in the appointee isn't going to, or the replacement, councillor isn't going to be appointed by the council. There, it is happening all over Oregon right now, where quorums of councils are being recalled and the body can't do anything for a long period of time. Just imagine what, what would have happened in, just in your recent past, you would be continuing with no city manager if this passed and a recall had been successful, arguably. So not only when Council Black described it as ridiculous and unworkable, I'm like, actually, some business would stop. It's not serving your public. So just keep that in mind when trying to come up or as others are trying to craft solutions. Yeah.
Concerns from council. Ms. Black.
Madam Mayor, I would like to, the city council acknowledged that a grievance was filed as far as the process for hiring a city manager. I would have a response due for the city attorney to indicate that we were denying that the facts, denied, sorry, denied the facts that we, I can't remember.
It's accepting the facts, adding to those facts, and explaining why there wasn't a violation of public means lost. Sorry, just to clarify.
You have a motion, Ms. Black? All that's been going on, that is, I know.
I am.
The best. Any other concerns? Ms. Stone.
I am, of course, concerned that the residents of my ward don't feel represented. I believe, Mr. Borg, you may know, because I was in the ward too, which is the ward that I represent. I just want to encourage people to contact me with those concerns. I would gladly respond to any, I would gladly respond to Mr. Borg's concerns if he hadn't been brought into me. He is, I can only assume, talked to hundreds of people about my performance as a city councillor, reached out to hundreds of people. I was not one of them. So it is really hard to know how to respond to such things. To concern that, here's, frankly, I asked Mr. Borg about the concerns and he said it was too late, I was already on my way out. I'd like him to justify Dust Till Dawn in a way that makes me believe I wouldn't just be an underperimeter to our city, to others. Please, if you have concerns about the way you're being represented and how you're represented. Thank you.
Any else? Business from the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's no business other than I'll give you a brief report on some items. The very first one I wanted to share with the council is that we received a very nice thank you letter from Ms. Kelly and her husband, Sean and Nadine Kelly. They are folks that operate the courtesy center at the airport. And this is a letter from volunteers just really thanking the city council for the support of the courtesy car that we provide and the number of users and how beneficial that, that car is to the tourists that choose to fly into the airport and spend time in Cottage Grove. So they wanted to make sure that that message was passed on, and a huge thank you to the council for that. Second, I wanted to bring up that in an effort to schedule a fine facilitator and schedule homelessness work session, City Recorder has gotten confirmation from Jack Boyson from St. Vincent de Paul, that he would be willing and, and would look forward to facilitating that work session. But unfortunately, he's not available on the two dates that the council kind of chose for that work session. So if it's acceptable to the council, Ms. Roberts would, once again, find out his availability and find out what would work best for the council. So if that's acceptable, we'll go down that process. Okay. Thirdly, now that Mr. Sauerlein's contract has been approved and his start date is scheduled for January 22nd, at the January 22nd date, there was a work session to follow the regular session to start with council rules. At this time, we're going to tentatively continue down that path, but I want to verify with Mr. Sauerlein that he will be comfortable. I'm sure that it's just going to be kind of a kickoff to that conversation. I know that Mr. Klein provided some additional information for the council to consider, but I just want to verify that Mr. Sauerlein is comfortable with participating or, unless he might want to reschedule that to where he can get his feet underneath him. So just wanted to share that. And then lastly, I wanted to share with you, we have been, we, Sean and I and myself have been meeting with various different organizations and clubs in regards to sharing where our street ad hoc committee, the information that we've gathered to date, I believe each of you have been provided kind of our PowerPoint discussion that we're reaching out. We, Ms. Nye has created a, you know, questionnaire, a comment card. So I'd share that we, we held a, we shared this information with the Community Development Corporation. We've also met with the Middlefield Homeowners Association, where we had probably about 25 individuals that participated. We, we presented to the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, where there was 12 people present. We were scheduled to be on the Beaver Show for December 28th, but it was canceled because the station was not hosting any additional shows during that week. So today, graciously, as I attended the Beaver Show today to talk about the agenda, there was a considerable conversation today. Cameron entertained, and I'm hopeful that we'll schedule a second appearance with Ms. Baylor to, you know, have a total show here this month, or possibly in February. Then on January 6th, this last Saturday, we attended the American Legion Hall, a regular monthly meeting. There was 20 to 25 individuals there, and we received 15 comment cards. Had some very good questions, some very good comments. We scheduled our next meeting is January 17th with the Kiwanis Club at noon, and then January 18th in the evening, kind of ahead of the regular Elks Club meeting. So they have, we've encouraged their members to come a half hour early so that we can make that presentation. Now, January 25th, we've been invited, actually, we had kind of a conflict. We were originally invited to the Lions Club, but now the Chamber of Commerce would like us to present to the, at their annual luncheon. So we believe at this point that it'll be a combined Lions Club participation with the annual Chamber Luncheon. And then the last item I have on the calendar at present time is February 8th Rotary Club meeting. I would share with you the point to work with Ms. Roberts to see if there's a date in February, or several dates, that we might be able to have a, a public forum or a town hall forum at the Armory. And so once we have some dates when that would be available, I want to share it with the committee and try to pick a date where we can hopefully get as many members of the ad hoc committee available to be present at that. And if anybody has some additional opportunities of being able to go to an audience of individuals, please share that with me. We will make a contact and try to get them on the calendar so that we can gather as much information as possible to present to the committee. I believe that we will try to reconvene the committee towards the middle or end of February so that the committee can hear the results of the outreach, and then hopefully be able to formulate a recommendation to council. So that's the conclusion of my report. Any questions?
Ms. Stone. No questions, but thank you so much for taking the lead on that committee and really doing an amazing outreach job. I just cannot commend you enough. It's been quite the process and it's really appreciated. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Council.
I have been hearing back from the committee that they are very enjoying and giving a lot of pleasure. I want to congratulate them, so thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? With that, if there's anything else, this meeting's adjourned.